...which is going to be led by Mr. Demaria. Hello, thank you. We have none in silence led in the pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Demaria because my voice is very hoarse from screaming in Minnesota last night. So, I'm in silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you call please Ms. Guazza?
Yes. Chairman Williams.
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Kiefer.
Here.
Mr. Demaria.
Here.
Mr. Albrecht.
Here.
Mrs. Seberg.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. O'Handlin.
Here.
Ms. Doan.
Here.
Mr. Ajidi.
Here.
Thank you. Are there any additions and corrections to the agenda?
Yes, under consent agenda personnel, ratification of personnel, and under consent agenda, student services 2019-2020 special education annual plan.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have superintendent's announcements and spotlights. Dr. Saunders.
I think that might be our chairman's voice is missing. You might be able to hear the rest of us.
Okay.
Very little.
Well, we can have the folks in the back maybe. Thank you, and you can proceed.
So, good evening Chairman Williams, Vice Chairwoman Ms. Kiefer, Dr. Newman, and members of the board. I'm here representing, doing my best Al Radford impression for all of you to share some spotlights. Ms. Radford was not able to be here, so it's my pleasure to introduce to you some wonderful staff and students and people in our community to share with you today. So at this time, we're going to start with the, our first recognition, and I think, I think we have today our Prince William County Greater Manassas Regional Science Fair winners from Osborne High School. During the recent Prince William Manassas Regional Science Fair, Osborne High School emerged as big winners. Zane Van Deavere and George French. Come on down. Zane and George place first in the physics category. We also have Zach Nowak and Ethan Sari. Zach and Ethan, if you're here, come on down. Zach and Ethan place first in the computer science category. Additionally, the fair committee chose two grand prize winners, and both teams from Osborne were chosen for that. All of the students attend the Governor's School at Innovation Park on the Prince William campus of George Mason University. As grand prize winners, they have advanced to the Intel International Science and Engineering Fair, which will be held in Phoenix, Arizona in May. Congratulations. Congratulations again to our Osborne students. Manassas City Public Schools is pleased to celebrate with employees as they complete advanced degrees, and tonight, we want to congratulate Mayfield Intermediate School Principal Donald Frishkorn as he has earned his Doctorate of Education in Educational Leadership and Policy Studies from Virginia Tech. Dr. Frishkorn's, stay there. Joke anyway. Dr. Frishkorn's dissertation was entitled, "Planning, Preparing, and Implementing a One-to-One Computing Initiative in K-12 Education: A Case Study of a School Division's Journey Toward a One-to-One Computing Environment for Students and Staff." Congratulations, Dr. Frishkorn. Follow him on, what is it, hashtag MayfieldProud? What an awesome accomplishment. We have a lot of teachers and staff members in our audience tonight. The school board continues to recognize the outstanding contributions made by instructional and support employees through the Apple and Pear Award Program. The Apple Award is given to instructional or licensed personnel, and the Pear Award is given to support personnel. At this time, we're going to recognize the Apple winners for this quarter. We're going to start with Wesley Sprankle, first grade teacher Baldwin Elementary. Mr. Sprankle's nominator says he's been an amazing teammate and friend this year. He is always supportive of the first grade team and finds the perfect blend of doing things the Baldwin way while also adding his own unique flavor. He is creative, enthusiastic, and helpful, not only to the first grade team but to all around the school. Thank you. Next, we're going to have Debbie Smith, pre-K special education teacher from Jenny Dean Elementary School. Bethany Farrell, third grade ESOL teacher, Hayden Elementary School. Ms. Farrell is the epitome of a team player. She is dedicated to her students, her third grade, and her ESOL teams, as well as the Hayden community. She is a strong teacher leader at Hayden. Her passion for project-based learning is a driving force for PBL. She supports teachers in PBL to the fullest of her ability. Thank you. Lori Williams, librarian Round Elementary School. Amanda McGee, kindergarten teacher Weems Elementary School. This is Ms. McGee's second year teaching. She has great classroom management, promotes positive and respectful behavior, and always encourages her students to do their best and have fun. Ms. McGee has shown that she is an amazing team player by joining Girls on the Run and the Academic Club her first year, and continues to be a role model for all students. Thank you. From Baldwin Intermediate School, Kendall Hampton, sixth grade math-science. Kendall Hampton is a team player who is always willing to help her colleagues when needed. She is a fantastic problem solver and loves to find solutions to issues or challenges when they arise. She is a valuable member of the sixth grade team at Baldwin Intermediate School. Mayfield Intermediate School, Heather Peterson, school counselor. Ms. Peterson continuously demonstrates that she is truly engaged in Mayfield's community, and she strives to have a positive impact on the lives of students on a daily basis. Whether it is the positive message board you see as you walk into the building, or the phenomenal career fair that she organized for students, it is clear that Ms. Peterson sees the potential in everyone at Mayfield. From Metz Middle School, Mr. David Blevins, adaptive PE teacher. From Osborne High School, Angela Easley, director of choirs. As the high school choral director, Mrs. Easley exercises leadership, takes initiative, accepts and carries out additional job responsibilities for the success of her choral program. Recently, all of her choral groups earned a superior rating at the district choral assessments. This achievement sealed the blue ribbon status for the performing arts program at Osborne High School. Congratulations. Congratulations to all of our Apple Award winners, if we can do a quick photo. Another round of applause for our Apple winners. At this time, we'd like to share our Pear Award winners for this quarter. Our Pear Awards are our support employees. We're going to start with Baldwin Elementary School, Anna Gabadia, custodial shift stewardess. Anna always has a smile to share with the Baldwin community. Each day, she is in the cafeteria with students, and she can be seen laughing and talking with them about their day, the things that happen in their lives, and what they are learning. They know she cares about them. She shares her love of gardening and green thumb by caring for the school's flowerbeds. Her care can be seen as they begin to bloom, and we welcome an early spring. Congratulations. From Jenny Dean Elementary School, Rosemary Davis, library secretary. From Hayden Elementary School, Sue Smith, library media assistant. Sue Smith seeks to make teachers' lives so much easier at Hayden, from getting laminating back quickly, sometimes within the hour, to helping locate instructional content books and pooling a variety of developmentally appropriate texts for project-based learning and PBL units. She is a great library media assistant and colleague, and Hayden appreciates her. Thank you. From Baldwin Intermediate School, Cassia Jordan, special education instructional assistant. From Mayfield Intermediate School, Teresa Kaufman, special education instructional assistant. Teresa Kaufman always goes above and beyond for both students and staff. She is always willing to change her schedule to fit the needs of others. She is a kind and compassionate soul who cares for students like they were her own children. She dedicated much of her time to both in-school and out-of-school community activities. Ms. Kaufman truly wants the best for students, wants to see them succeed, and will do what she can to see that they do that. Thank you. From Metz Middle School, Matt Hayward, special education instructional assistant. Mr. Hayward goes above and beyond to support and execute the duties and responsibilities of an instructional assistant. He comes to work daily with a mindset to do and to support whatever he can. He has been given assignments to assist students with high needs and handles it with professionalism, kindness, and care. He truly cares about the students at Metz and makes every effort to build a positive and good relationship with each one by encouraging and guiding them daily. Congratulations. From Osborne High School, Elidia Pereira, custodian. Ms. Pereira has been dedicated, kind, and experienced custodian at Osborne for 22 years. She is oftentimes one of the first custodians to appear when a staff member calls for assistance, and she's always happy to lend a hand. She works tirelessly to keep the cafeteria and front entrance of the school looking spotless, and she always has a smile and a kind word for everyone. Congratulations. From Round Elementary School, Selena Gomez, instructional assistant. From Weems Elementary School, Supamas Kettler, cafeteria manager. Ms. Kettler is a wonderful kitchen manager. She is nice and kind with the students and the staff. She is hardworking, very flexible, and professional in her duties. She manages her team well and is an asset to Weems and MCPS. Thank you. I think we might have two nominees here from Baldwin. It's on here twice, so I think that might be what y'all are talking about, right? Baldwin Intermediate School, Lisbeth Bolts, our school nurse. Nurse Bolts is caring, humorous, understanding, meticulous, and marvelous as a school nurse. Her positive and organized personality make her the perfect candidate to be a shared school nurse between two schools, amounting to almost 1,000 students from the youngest level of pre-K all the way to sixth grade. Because of her efforts, Baldwin Elementary School and Baldwin Intermediate has one of the highest complaint percentages for immunization, oh, compliant. Sorry about that. Compliant percentages for immunizations in the division, that sounds better. She also lovingly attends to any staff who may at times need her healthcare assistance for their own concerns. She is an important part of this unique blend of two schools in one campus and a most valuable asset every day. Thank you. From the transportation department, Brenda Blair, school bus driver. Brenda is a highly skilled and safe bus driver. Her kindness is well-known and regarded by her peers, school staff, supervisors, students, and parents. She knows her students well and is a valuable part of the MCPS team. Congratulations. From central office maintenance, Jody Bieber, administrative associate too for food services. So congratulations to all of our Pear winners for this evening, if you all could come together for a photo.
Have a complaint about that.
Smile.
Congratulations again to our Pear winners. And we do have one additional recognition tonight. At this time, Sarah Case, district director for the Patriot District Parent Teacher Association will come forward with a few presentations. Ms. Case?
Hello everyone, good evening. My name is Sarah Case, and I'm the district director of Patriot District, PTA. This is Crystal Levine, and she is the assistant district director. Patriot District is one of 21 districts, which makes up Virginia PTA, the oldest and largest child advocacy organization in the Commonwealth of Virginia, with over 200,000 members consisting of students and their families and our school life and staff. Tonight, we are here to recognize three wonderful advocates in the Manassas City Public School District. Each year, we ask our district membership to nominate candidates for an Outstanding Educator Award and an Outstanding Staff Administrator Award. These individuals are PTA members at their school who actively support the work and purposes of the PTA and partner with families to support active participation in students' education, both at home and school.
Earlier this month, we presented these awards for Outstanding Educator and Outstanding Staff Administrator, but we wanted to recognize them here as well. First, for Outstanding Educator, this award recognizes individuals who go beyond the normal expectations of their job to make the learning environment fun, valuable, and challenging. From Hayden Elementary, Diane DeCoco received this award. Mrs. DeCoco is incredibly enthusiastic about teaching and connecting with her students to encourage learning. She uses a shared love of sports, history, and reading to create a positive learning environment where each child is valued and an important part of the class. She brings energy to required lessons and has lots of ideas to help students go deeper. Additionally, she is an advocate of the PTA and has been to many, many meetings and have volunteered at many events over her years at Hayden. You can't meet Diane and not be impressed with her passion for educating. Our Outstanding Staff and Administrator Award was also presented, and this award recognizes staff or administrators who are supportive, helpful, and personally involved in the PTA. From Hayden Elementary School also, this award was presented to Kelly Anderson. Kelly has actively supported the PTA since she began working at Hayden three years ago. She has also served on the executive board for the last two years. She is dedicated to improving parent-school communication and relationships with a specific interest in reaching Spanish-speaking families. She brings a unique perspective to board decisions, and her contributions have been invaluable.
One more. This year, the district wanted to recognize the hard work that occurs outside of our school buildings as well. I'm here tonight to present our inaugural School Board Member of the Year Award to Suzanne Seberg. Mrs. Seberg is an advocate for parents of MCPS. She values parent input and works to incorporate parent perspectives into school board discussions and votes. She goes out of her way to make sure parents' concerns are heard and is even willing to meet one-on-one if necessary. She also advocates for students at the state and national level to ensure exceptional education for MCPS students. Thank you for all you all do for your dedication to our students, our families, and the mission of PTA. We are truly PTA proud of Manassas City Public Schools.
So congratulations to all of our spotlight winners tonight. That concludes our spotlights.
Very well done. No, you should have done one. Yeah, oh, thank goodness. The heck happened?
Are there any board committee reports?
No, sir.
Next board comments, Ms. Doan.
Thank you. It's amazing to see how fast the school year has flown by, and we're already into our fourth marking period at Osborne. And we're hosting our third and final Spirit Week this week as well, and personally, I love seeing the school rejuvenate with energy and festivity during these weeks, especially as we near our exam period. SOLs are scheduled for the 21st through the 24th of May at Osborne, and during these days, it is asked that you only go to school if you have an exam scheduled for that time. More information about SOL testing and course dates can be found on the Osborne website. And also...
To all seniors who are heading to college, I hope you are finalizing your choice and decided where you want to attend for the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Demaria?
Thank you, sir. Just a few things. I want to congratulate everybody, including myself, who worked so hard on Saturday on the mulch sale and the delivery of all the mulch. There weren't as many kids as we wanted to have there, but the ones that were there worked very hard. Sometimes I say the wrong thing, and I get yelled at for that, but they all worked very hard, and the parents that were there, it was great, and it's a lot of work, but it's always a good time. And while we were there, I went to, I walked up to Saturday to school, Saturday school, and the spread that the parents had there for these kids that were working on Saturday school was just incredible. And yeah, I did steal some of that. Today, on my way home from work, I happened to be coming by Osborne right at the release time, and between the crossing guard and the police officer and the buses, it looked like a ballet, the way these buses were coming out of there, knowing which way to go, and obviously, they know which way to go. But everybody stopped and waited, and they got them all out, they got them up to the hill by the stop sign by the parking garage, and the officer up there had everybody going the right, which way they were supposed to go. It was very impressive. So to our bus drivers and to our police officers and our crossing guards, job well done. It was really neat to sit there and watch that. And, I don't know what day, the VEA celebrated Leroy Williams with a reception. Leroy was named the ESP Person of the Year for Virginia, not for Manassas or not for Prince William County area or any region, but for Virginia. And that was for 40 years of work that Leroy's put in for our kids. He's a, something that we all should try to live up to, the way he puts in time for our kids, the way he supports our kids at events that he's not supposed, doesn't need to be at, and he goes to those. So Leroy, congratulations on VEA ESP Personnel of the Year. Thank you, sir.
Mrs. Williams?
I would like to first congratulate the students who are honored up here tonight. They really, truly, truly make us proud, and we had to fill out a survey, I think, I'm not sure when the surveys do, about our schools and our particular schools that our students go to. And one of the things I did point out is all of the many, many different options of courses, activities, things that our schools do offer our students. And the Governor's School, I'm so thankful that all these children have the opportunity to attend Governor's School. What a great opportunity. I'd also like to say, this year, we have had a lot of firsts, and I think we talked about that a couple meetings ago, but including our Cavs who won last night. How exciting. I was so excited. That game just, I was so tired last night, but I stayed up. Also, the beautification committee judged their poster drawing contest... Also, the Beautification Committee judged their poster drawing contest, which is something they host every year. Pre-K through 4th grade have an opportunity to, to draw posters, and then we, as a Beautification Committee, judge them, and we did that this past Friday. That was really exciting. So we've got our winners, and they will be announced on Arbor Day, which this year is Friday, April 26 at 10:00 a.m. It's going to be at Round Elementary School. And I, this year's Young Reading Week at Jenny Dean, so many of us will be reading there this week or have already. So that, I'm looking forward to that this week as well. And other than that, I want to wish everybody a very safe, safe holiday this coming up week. Spring break is always a good time. Kids are getting excited. Hopefully, we can keep them tame for SOLs. However, I just want to make sure everybody's safe, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Seberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Congratulations to all our students and teachers and staff that was honored here tonight. Today, I was able to chaperone a field trip to the Hilton Center for Performing Arts. Some Metz and Osborne students were able to see classical brass, five musicians that incorporated history, art from the Renaissance period, architecture, and a variety of styles of music into their performances. They even performed some music using instruments made from supplies at Home Depot. So I think the students got some great ideas for what they can do during spring break. It was very much enjoyed by the students and also the chaperones, and it's just another sign of why I'm grateful to represent our schools and our city as we value arts and education. Some thank yous go out to the Hilton Center for Performing Arts for hosting the event, to Pak, which is Performing Arts Kids, for the funding, and Mrs. Carol Hart here today for arranging today's visit. Thank you for doing that for our kids. And also thanks to the band directors and the rest of the chaperones that accompanied our students today. I also want to thank the Patriot District PTA for my award tonight. Thank you so much. It's important to me because I value your mission. Every child, one voice. And I take it with me into my role as a school board member. And I couldn't do what I do as a school board member if it weren't for the love and support of my family and also my fellow school board members. So thank you all.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Ms. Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had the honor last week of attending the National School Board Association, excuse me, conference representing Virginia, one of the three delegates to the Delegate Assembly. A lot of things, but I really, one of the speakers, Chris, do you actually know him, was the President of the International Society of Human Resource Management. And he gave one of the general session speeches, and he was talking about education and the future, and specifically the workforce. And, you know, past governors have focused on workforce readiness, and we talk about what it is to be technologically savvy. And his message really was, over the next coming 20, 30, 40, 50 years, the only thing we can guarantee is change. So really, what we need to be teaching children, talk about the fundamentals and communications, whether it's reading or writing is a fundamental skill. And then he started talking, he called that a hard skill, by the way. He didn't call that a soft skill. He said, "That is as important as math." And he said, "We need to be teaching the fact that we need to enforce a willingness to learn, teach flexibility, and teach critical skills like dependability." And he got into something which I had no idea existed, it's something called ghosting. And apparently internationally, 20% of interviewees do not show up for an interview. And 10% of new hires don't show up, which is just, to me, unfathomable. But it gets back to that dependability and what we need to do and what we need to be teaching. So I found that really interesting and wanted to share it. I also went to a session on artificial intelligence, and I wish Mr. Bush no was here because, in fact, they talked about how Reuters has artificial intelligence and most Reuters press releases today are written by computers. They take the financial data that's publicly disclosed, it churns it out, does the analysis, writes the article, and puts it out on the web. Then I learned yesterday, IBM has an AI program that can predict a 99.7% accuracy when an employee will leave, just based upon their patterns at work. It's scary. I saw someone shake their head. It really was scary hearing about that. So it talks about where the future really could be going. A lot more locally.
Me, never.
Well, you know, don't know. But more locally, we gave a presentation last week to city council on the school board budget. What I personally would say, it was a great dialogue, and we talked about what the unfunded needs of the schools are, and we really had a good discussion with the city about why they are the ones and our local government, and they are the appropriators, must do to fund a school's budget because of the inability, unwillingness, take your pick of verbs, of the state and federal government to do their fair share. The burden has been put on the localities. And that budget that we presented as a school board, that we passed as a school board, had a lot of difficult decisions in it, a lot of things people in the community wanted, whether it's a cost of living increase appropriately for our teachers, more than just a step, or something very near and dear to us from a bricks and mortar perspective, and New Dean Elementary School. Instead, we're putting Band-Aids on the school to have it last longer because we cannot afford the debt service and keep the academic programs going. So we've pushed that out five years. So I'm sure that's a dialogue the community will continue to have, and as board member, I look forward to it. So thank you, sir.
Mr. Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations to Zane, George, Zach, and Ethan for their outstanding achievement at the Prince William Manassas Regional Science Fair. They represented the city of Manassas wonderfully, and I wish them the best of lucks out in Phoenix, although I don't think there's any luck involved. It's pure talent, so, great kids. Congratulations to our newly, our employee who just got his doctorate. I know everyone's left. It's sad, but anyway, congratulations. Congratulations to all the PTA Award winners, including our own Suzanne. Thank you, Suzanne, for all you do. Congratulations to all the Apple and Pear Award winners. And I was not at the last meeting, and I wanted to take a moment to thank Mrs. Albrecht, Mrs. Weaver, and all the students who came and honored the school board. I have my work of art at home, getting ready to hang it up somewhere appropriate, so thank the students, especially Chance Houndsworth, for doing that. It was, it was very special, so thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Kiefer.
Thank you, and I'll be brief, but I will say, congratulations to you, VA. I know Mr. Williams probably can't say how excited he is because he screamed his voice out last night, but it's pretty awesome to just see Virginia keep going in general. I wanted to congratulate everybody today. It's funny when, when the people come up here and you realize, like, your journey through the school system with your own kids and these people that have touched you. I can tell you Nurse Bolts saved me more times than not in the reminders of things that I should have been better about, and so it's just nice to see them recognized. Also, the boys and the science fair winners in particular, the Governor's School is doing a lot of great things. It's growing. Mr. Albrecht and I serve on the joint boards up there. Ms. Hart is here, Mrs. Hart is here, and she's always up there as well, trying to grow the program like nobody's business, the way she does outreach to those kids to get them into such a good program. Thank you for that. And we look forward to giving an update soon on sort of all of the, the exciting things, I would say, will be going on with Governor's School discussions in the future. I'm also happy to see us briefly discussing excellence in workforce tonight. I can say that, you know, being out in the community, I'm now having outsiders recognizing what Manassas City Public Schools are doing as it relates to career readiness, or, you know, those programs that have been put into place, even just over the few years that I've been on the board, has been such an amazing growth in it, and to have it be really recognized by outsiders who are like, "How do I get into work in Manassas City Public Schools?" I mean, looking at these things, it's really a testament to what's going on and all the people working on this. I also just wanted to say it's National Volunteer Week. The schools, there's a lot that goes on that we talk about, but we oftentimes don't talk about the volunteers, whether it's PTOs, PTAs, community members, businesses that do tours for our kids, just out of the graciousness of their hearts. There's just so many people that make this division and this city tick, and I just wanted, as National Volunteer Week, to thank you all for the service that you do, not only to our schools, but to our community. Thank you.
Are there any citizens' comments? If not, next consent agenda? Do you have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the school board of the city of Manassas adopt the consent agenda as modified.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. Hanlon, that the school board adopt the consent agenda as modified. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir. Pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3119 and School Board Policy GCCB, Employment of Family Members, I certify that I played no role in the recommendation of hire for Anna Damaria as an employee of Manassas City Public Schools.
Thank you. You have a discussion? Okay, so a motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. Hanlon, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the consent agenda as modified. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it, 7-0. Next discussion agenda, new business, revision to approved school board regular business meeting calendar.
In January, you approved your meeting dates for the year, and one of the dates is June 11th. That is now graduation date. I would like to propose that you change the regular meeting on June 11th to a special meeting to deal with any locally verified credit issues that you may have with students.
Thanks. Do you want us?
Yeah, this is just for discussion. We'll bring it for action next month.
Any questions?
So there would only be one meeting in June, that a regular business meeting? Thank you.
No other discussion? Thank you. Next, action agenda, student achievement, VSBA Excellence in Workforce Readiness Award.
Chairman Williams, Vice Chairwoman Kiefer, Dr. Newman, members of the board. I'm excited to be here tonight to present the board with the Manassas City Public Schools' nominee for the VSBA Annual Excellence in Workforce Readiness Award. This award seeks to recognize Virginia's school divisions who have achieved excellence in workforce readiness through an innovative program or project within your school community, with an emphasis on communication and collaboration with the business community, student engagement with the business community, or student entrepreneurial activities. Ms. Tovalla was going to be here with me this evening, but those of you know, Ms. Tovalla is our cosmetology teacher at Osborne High School. Friday is Skills USA, and her students are preparing. She was there last night until 9 o'clock, and she's there with them tonight, and they are preparing for that, so I offered to come and, and share this information. This year, Ms. Tovalla, who is our cosmetology teacher and also Virginia's lead cosmetology teacher, worked with the National Technical Honor Society at Osborne High School to create an opportunity. The NTHS members are required to participate in community service hours. A total of 15 service hours are required through the year. The members wanted to do something different and unique to support their fellow students. The students created the idea of a Career Professional Closet and Career Coaching Center at Osborne High School. The Career Closet provides Osborne students with basic supplies that include clothing, toiletries, et cetera, that might be necessary for interviews. A local small business owner, Ms. Janaye Monroe, Professionals by Design, volunteered to support the program, as well as other members of our chamber that have been participating with Ms. Tovalla over the year. Ms. Monroe offered to train and coach students at the school with workforce-related skills and public speaking. Osborne High School student members came in on their days off and spent eight hours learning the ins and outs of resume writing, professionalism, 60-second elevator speeches, interviewing skills, et cetera. Later, the members worked on creating a PowerPoint as a training, training tool, and posted a resume template for our members to use when they coach their peers. So our National Technical, Technical Honor Society students are the ones that are doing the coaching with our students, along with professionals in the community. Osborne students who need help with resume writing, interview skills, can now request the services of a National Technical Honor Society member through the coaching center. As soon as Osborne launched the program, they had participants right away. Just recently, an NTHS member coached another, a young man who was able to help him with his resume and his interview skills, and he got the job, the first time he was on, on the spot. So currently, those members have a table set up during some of the lunches where they help their peers and direct them to the professional clothing closet if they need that, and they're going to be helping students with their resumes for the upcoming job fair. So we're really excited to have this as our nomination for the VSBA Workforce Readiness Award. The efforts, while still in the early stages, and I'll give a shout out to anyone who is listening, that if there are members of the community or the professional community that want to support that, they can just let us know, and we will tell them how they, they can do that. But this is an exciting endeavor that really is student-generated and supported by our local community, businesses, and teachers at Osborne High School. So this is our nominee. The process, we do require that there's an official vote by the school board to submit the nomination, and so that's what I'm here to ask for today.
Thanks. Do you have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas waive second reading and approve the submission of the Career Closet Project at Osborne High School as an entry for the VSBA Excellence in Workforce Readiness Award.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Kiefer, second by Mrs. Williams, that the school board of the city of Manassas waive second reading and approve the submission of the Career Closet Project at Osborne High School as an entry for the VSBA Excellence in Workforce Readiness Award. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it, 7-0. Thank you, Dr. Snodgrass.
Thank you.
Next up, Student Services. Actually, Student Services was moved to the consent agenda. So after that, I think we're done.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Damaria, second by Mrs. Kiefer, that we adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Your eyes have it. We are adjourned at 7...